Okay, good afternoon, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety has amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. I would like to just do some introductions before we get into the introductions. My name is Stan Kimmorik. I will be your Chair this afternoon. I would also like to introduce my fellow panel members. On my left, Natalia Popovic. On my right, Donald Taylor. On my far-right, Bill Dalton. And on my far, far-left, Barbara Bertozic, our Deputy Secretary-Treasurer for the Utobico-Yorke Panel, and Barb's staff in between us and the crowd. By way of introduction, the Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to properties, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consents to sever property to create new lots. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Missississauques of the Credit, the Inna Shnabi, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, the Wondat Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississauques of the Credit. Our procedure this afternoon, Committee of Adjustment, public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some participants and applicants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, the online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the City of Toronto YouTube channel and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, et cetera, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five minutes allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. Copies of the decision of the committee. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address as Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Now only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our procedure, we will go through each item as listed in the order of the agenda. When making your submissions, where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching or at the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other material you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing today. When addressing the committee, please clarify or please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee will not entertain revisions, as I mentioned before. The committee may decide to defer the application if it is substantively revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Secondly, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will then be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating online. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut, but only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. So, first item on our agenda, do we have any declarations of interest by panel members or staff for the afternoon session? I think we have one.
Yes, I do with item twenty-eight.
Okay.
I had previously done work for the applicant. I'm not involved with this application, but I will declare a conflict.
We will ask you to leave, sir. Okay, thank you. And then I'd like to deal with deferral requests before we go to the top of the agenda, so...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, before you start, we got a late deferral request for item, item twenty-seven.
Okay. That would be, hold on, twenty...
Item twenty-two, I think, and twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-two is first, okay. So let's deal with item twenty-two. I believe the applicant has asked for last-minute deferral. It's Eight New Home Road, and... Ah, you're here, okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee, Committee of Adjustment staff. My name is Andrew Palumbo and I am the Planner and Agent for Eight New Home Road, requesting a deferral today to effectively deal with the letters of objection as well as the Transportation Staff Report that have been provided. Give us time to revisit the plan and come back to the committee once we've had a chance to go back to the drawing board.
Okay, thank you. We have someone online to speak to this as well?
Yes, I will connect them now.
My name, Oleg Malouev. I'm a resident of Eight New Home Road, apartment two oh six.
Okay, good aft-...
And I will...
Good aft-... Good afternoon. The applicant is requesting a deferral, so I'm not asking you to speak to the merits of the application at this point, but just to get your input on deferring the application, whether you have any issues with that.
Referral application, file eight one zero one zero six.
That's correct. So are you okay with us d-...
I mean, I want to...
Are you okay if...
Sorry?
Are you okay with us deferring this item today, so it'll come back at a later time?
Okay.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. No other speakers?
No.
Yeah?
Honorable members, I'm tenant of three oh six, Eight New Home Road. Due to our landlord's poor communication advising this big change in our life, I didn't get the chance to wrote the email, the full email of my consent.
If we do the deferral, you'll get the chance because it won't happen today.
Okay, thank you so much. So I will be notified.
You'll get a new notice, yeah.
No, 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 wait. You're a tenant at Eight New Home?
Yes.
So please make sure you fill out one of those cards.
So once you get, well, once you fill out the card, you'll be on the mailing list to get notice. No, 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 no.
Fill that out and hand it in.
Just fill out the card. One of the staff will help you. Just fill out the card and then you will get noti- the new notice for when this comes back to us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, because tenants don't get our notice, I wanted to make sure.
Anyone else?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Thomas. Back to the committee then.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to defer this matter as requested by the applicant.
Okay, so that they can process with transportation and...
And deal with those.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Okay, the item is deferred.
And just to the agent, can you make sure that all the tenants of that building are notified of the new hearing date?
Yes, will do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next item for deferral, I believe, is twenty-seven then? Eight Park Lane. It's an application to maintain a two-story addition above the existing dwelling. And... Matthew?
Afternoon, committee members. My name is Matthew Revo.
Good afternoon.
I'm the agent for this application. I'm actually really frustrated with this situation. We've deferred in the past. Just to clarify the situation, this is something that was, a permit was issued, it was built, but they didn't follow the drawings. However, inspectors approved the work and the work kept continuing on until the house was completely built. Now that they're trying to close the permit and they're already living in there, they can't, the, sorry, the original building inspector retired, the new one says, "I can't in good faith close the permit because it doesn't match the drawings." So we're here to try and rectify what's been constructed as per approved inspections by the previous inspector. The original planner did not submit any objection to this application. However, it seems that since we've deferred and clarified some of the numbers and obtained a survey to verify site conditions, a new planner has now written a letter of objection. So unless we can proceed to approve today, I mean, we don't have a choice but to defer and explain the whole situation to the new planner.
Well, we can proceed, but we can't...
I've never been in this situation before.
We can proceed, but we can't guarantee we're going to approve.
Of course, of course. I just kind of wanted to put that on record. I think we don't have a choice but to defer so that we can have this new planner, who may not be aware of the history, withdraw their, their comments of objection.
Okay.
But just to clarify publicly...
So that's why I'm here today, yes?
The two previous hearings, planning also asked for deferrals, so I don't know that it's surprising that they're now asking for a refusal if their concerns couldn't be addressed. And with respect to the building inspector, I don't think he should be criticized for doing his job. If the building wasn't built according to permit, then I don't think the applicant should be upset with the building inspector. But I don't want a response back. I just wanted to state that.
Okay.
Yeah, that wasn't my intention, but let me know if you want me to speak to that.
I don't, I think we're good.
Okay.
Are there any comments from committee members before we take this? No. Like any, okay. There are no other speakers on this item?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Thomas. Okay, back to committee then.
I'll move to defer this matter as well. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Popovic.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, the item is deferred again. Okay. Oops. Yeah, I think that was the only two that we... Okay. So we're back to the top of the agenda, which is item twenty-one, the first item for the afternoon. Ten Callwood Road. This is an application to legalize and maintain the two-story front addition and to construct a two-story rear addition. There is one variance being requested. It is for FSI. And David Stickney?
David, David Stickney for the owners. My address is six seven seven three twelve thirteen Side Road in, in Clearview, Ontario.
Okay, we have two chiming in with objections and three chiming in with support and no other speakers?
Uh, no.
No one ready? I'm not sure if we need a full presentation, but if you want to give us an overview or just open it up to questions, up to you.
I'm, I'm here for any questions and I can explain any part of the...
Okay.
I mean, I would clarify one thing though, sir.
Please.
The, it's not to legalize an addition to the front nor an addition at the rear. Those have been permitted and I included the building permit in my submissions for what was actually built. And what we're asking for now is to modify the loft structure above the garage into floor area as well as a small area that was originally hot water mechanical space and to enclose a breezeway at the side and, and a deck at the back. And just as a small rider to all of that, the brick that was added to the front is a permitted item under the bylaw, but we've included the floor area that was added by the rigid insulation and, and the brick in the floor area that we're asking for, just so that it's all understood as, as being one entity.
Okay. Any questions from committee members? No. Let's take it into committee then. Is anyone ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion unless there's any questions, comments? No? Yeah, I'm satisfied the single variance being requested meets the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move approval without conditions.
Seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Okay, none of us approve of, thank you, Mr. Stickney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee.
Okay, so item twenty-two, we have deferred. Item twenty-three is fourteen Restever Gate or Restever Gate. This is an application to construct a new detached fourplex. There are three variances being requested. We have forestry requesting denial or in the alternative conditions one and two. We have an objection petition with seventeen signatures. And we have a letter from the local councillor requesting either deferral or refusal. And Franco Romano is the agent, and I believe Mr. Romano is online. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the panel. Franco Romano, Action Planning, three twenty-one Lakeshore.
Okay. I'm assuming you don't want to defer this.
Yes, sir, I'd like to proceed.
Okay. Proceed away.
Okay, Staff can bring up my presentation slides, please. The first slide is an air photograph. One of the purposes of this air photograph is to show that one of the variance requests that's being made, which is to permit parking in the front, is a fairly common condition. Fifty-two percent of the properties within this cul-de-sac, that is eleven of twenty-one properties, have some condition of front yard parking, meaning that there is a parking space that's located in front of the front wall of the dwelling and it, and it, that parking space does not front a garage, either integral garage or detached garage. And as I show on the next slide, if Staff can go to the next slide, please, we'll see that the site plan has the existing driveway to remain. So there is a side driveway that comes in off of Restever. And the proposal is basically to keep that front portion of the driveway to remain. So there is actual parking that's being supplied and that parking is being supplied in a manner that's conventionally provided along this street. It's not in, in an integral or detached garage condition, but it is with, upon a driveway that is in front of the, of the dwelling and that is a common condition along the street. In terms of, so that is variance number, number three, and I note that transportation, either transportation or planning staff have concerns with that. You will see that in green is landscaping, so the front yard landscaping occupies more than eighty-four percent of the lot and the rear yard landscaping is approaching one hundred percent. There are trees in the front and in the rear and it's our position that there are no trees that need to be removed in order to permit this construction to occur. When we look at the variance for the rear platform, that platform variance request is three point two two meters whereas two point five meters is permitted. And that covered porch in the rear is only one point eight three meters. It is the stairs leading to that porch and because there's a foundation to it, that stair is one point four two meters, that staircase, and it's only a few steps, four risers. So seventy-two percent of that, oh, sorry, seventy-two centimeters of those stairs trigger the variance. And you'll see a number of trees in the backyard, they're shown in the circles because the site plan overlays the, the survey. Those trees are not being removed. I know urban forestry talks about an objection and then there's a reference to a driveway and, and that isn't what's affecting any of the trees. And if we go to the, sorry, in terms of the site plan again, the way the design works internal is that it's basically back-to-back and one on top of the other in terms of the dwelling units. So it's kind of a mirror image in a flipped condition where the covered porch provides access and then the interior staircase distributes people into their respective units. If we go to the next slide, and this is also represented a bit in the site plan, but in the blue outline is a permitted building envelope. So on the right-hand side, proposed side yard setback is a little wider, one point two meters that's required. And on the left-hand side, we'll see that the, the proposed side yard setback ranges from one point four five meters to two point six seven meters because it's a bit of a, I guess it's an angled side lot line condition. So the building is, is fully within those parameters, also in terms of lot coverage, building length, building depth, et cetera. The building height variance is twelve inches, ten point three three meters instead of ten meters and you'll see we're just above the door mark condition. That is, that was triggered. But in terms of the floor heights, the floor to ceiling heights, on the first floor, it's nine feet, on the second floor, it's nine feet, and on the third floor, it's eight feet eleven inches to nine feet or into that the center ridge line. So I would submit that the three variances are minor in nature and satisfy all four tests for a minor variance and create no unacceptable adverse impact. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Just one question, which I think is on a lot of people's mind, and I think a lot of the concern raised by this is there seems to be a perception that perhaps what's being applied for here is an eight-plex rather than a four-plex. And if there's some way you can explain or alleviate those concerns, it would be helpful.
Certainly, thank you for that question. And the purpose of the application on the public hearing notice is to construct a new detached fourplex, so the variances are associated with that purpose. The zoning notice says that it's a three-plus unit detached, and eight-plex is not permitted. An eight-plex would be an apartment building. An apartment building is not a permitted land use in the RD zone and one would need a land use variance in order to permit it in a, an apartment building. An apartment building basically gets triggered where there's five units or more. In terms of the interior layout of this, of this, of the, of the plans before you today, there, the kitchens that are within those designs are not, are, and on those floor plans, I believe there's three or four kitchens that are shown, so it's only a four-plex. It's not an eight-plex.
Okay, I just, I think it's going to come up in the presentations. I just wanted to, to address it upfront and then maybe we can deal with it once we hear from the residents. So, our first speaker, Thomas, I think you changed your order on me?
Yes. So we have a Diomera. So we have three people who will speak first and then one person online.
Okay. So we just get your name and address, please?
Yeah, excuse me, yes, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm Diomera Sinopoli. I live at twenty Restever Gate, Toronto.
Thank you. And please...
Okay.
Tell us what you think.
Well, I wanted to make sure to bring your attention to the fact that Councillor Vincent Crisanti has submitted a letter to the committee for consideration. I will speak about the requested variance to increase the height of this proposed structure. The proposed structure of a three-story, four-unit multiplex at fourteen Restever Gate is fundamentally incompatible with the long-established character of Restever Gate and its surrounding neighborhood. Our street is a quiet cul-de-sac comprised exclusively of detached, single-family homes, all of which are just modest bungalows of one story in height. This low-rise residential form also characterizes most of the surrounding streets, further reinforcing the consistent community fabric of the area. The homes reinforce, the homes reinforcing the consistent community fa- oh, sorry. The existing homes reinforce a cohesive community feeling that aligns with the goals set out in the City of Toronto's official plan to preserve and protect the character of stable neighborhoods. I can attest to this having lived on this street for fifty years. The applicant seeks permission to construct a building exceeding the permitted height of ten meters, requesting an approval for an extra point three three meters. While the numerical differences may appear small, the real-world effect is profound when combined with a full three-story structure atop a high basement on a narrow, small lot. The third floor alone is an excessive height on this street. This scale simply does not exist anywhere else on Restever Gate or the neighborhood. The impacts on the neighboring properties, particularly sixteen Restever Gate, would be immediate and severe, including significant loss of sunlight and reduced privacy and a fundamental disruption of the quiet residential character that has been carefully maintained for decades. This impact is exacerbated by the reduced distance between the new proposed structures and adjacent homes, considering that at present, there's a driveway between each of the homes on this street. We applying, applying this, the four-part test to these variants entails for the following reasons. It fails for the following reasons. The variance is not minor. The additional height and mass are not minor in context. They would fundamentally alter the experience and enjoyment of nearby properties and drastically change the streetscape and neighborhood. The variance is not desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land. It is not appropriate to introduce a building of this scale and intensity into a stable, low-rise, low-density street. It'll create an out-of-place and jarring visual and functional change. Does the variance maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws? No. Height and density precisely to preserve stable residential communities, or the zoning bylaw limits the height and density precisely to preserve the community. And does the variance maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan? No. The official plan requires that new developments respect and reinforce the existing physical character of the neighborhood. This proposal clearly undermines that requirement. Furthermore, approving this application... Furthermore, approving this application would set a dangerous precedent, encouraging further inappropriate intensifications that could quickly destabilize the entire street and neighborhoods. Respectfully for these reasons, I submit that the committee must deny this application. There's also one other item, if I have a moment, to address the fact that there was no water, wastewater impact report submitted, indicating that, because how the number of units in this building, considering that there is a structure for eight kitchens, again, to the point that this could be changed to an eight-plex, sixteen bathrooms plus washing machines, this will definitely affect the water pressure of everyone on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Thank you.
No questions.
So is Ruby next? I'm just trying to...
Yes, Ruby is next.
Ruby Isaac, sixteen Reste Evergate.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, and to the committee members. The proposed development at fourteen Reste Evergate threatens not only the character of my neighborhood, but also the natural environment and the property rights of adjacent neighbors. The applicant seeks a rear yard setback variance, and in quote, as stated in the letter, the proposed platform will encroach three point two meters into the required rear yard setback. I am in agreement with a memorandum submitted by the urban forestry staff citing their concerns regarding injury or removal of mature trees located at the back of fourteen Reste Evergate. A reduction of three point two-two meters in the rear yard space will have a very negative impact on the protective, protected mature trees and decrease the green space even more on this small lot. Urban forestry memorandum refers to section three point four, the natural environment policy one D, point number two, and I quote, "increasing tree canopy coverage and diversity, especially of long-lived native and large shade trees." And in order to accomplish this, the vital and protected mature trees located at the back of fourteen Reste Evergate need to be safeguarded so that it can be preserved and enhance our urban forest. Urban forestry is very cognizant of the negative impact to the protected trees and the environment, and has recommended to deny this variance, and this is supported by Counselor Crisanti's letter of objection. At the front of the property, and the pictures are in your package, between fourteen and sixteen Reste Evergate stands a large mature tree. Most of the tree base is situated on the applicant's property, but its canopy and root system extends significantly onto sixteen Reste Evergate. This makes it a boundary tree under the Ontario Forestry Act, meaning it's jointly owned and cannot be removed or injured without the consent of both property owners. I'm the homeowner of sixteen Reste Evergate, and I have not provided consent. The boundary tree is also impacted by the requested parking variance, as construction activities, driveway modifications, excavation for additional parking will threaten its root system and overall health. The consequence of harming any of the trees at fourteen Reste Evergate are severe. Beyond property destabilization and potential damage to driveway, fences, soil, there are significant environmental harms. Our trees contribute to our air quality, they mitigate stormwater runoff, they enhance shade and cooling, they support biodiversity, natural beauty that defines Reste Evergate. Committee members, as stated on the website and in the letter, to conduct site visits before the hearing. It is essential that they observe firsthand the proximity of the rear and front trees to the proposed construction and understand the irreversible consequences that could result. The city is strongly committed to protecting mature trees for all our benefit. The four-part test to the second variance respectfully fails. Is the variance minor? No. Injury or destruction of mature protected trees is not minor, it represents permanent environmental damage. Is the variance desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land? No. Destroying or jeopardizing, again, these protected trees against the city's environmental policy is not desirable and would, again, irreversibly degrade properties in my neighborhood. Does the variance maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? No. The zoning bylaw, combined with the city trees protection rules, seeks to protect the urban canopy, natural environment, and this proposal does not respect that. And the last question, does the variance maintain the general intent? No, the official plan explicitly commits the city to protecting green spaces and trees and green spaces. Allowing this variance for this build would directly contravene that commitment. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the committee of adjustments to deny the application submitted by fourteen Reste Evergate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being right on time. Any questions?
Yeah, I believe the applicant addressed the forestry memo at the beginning, that tree is not being touched.
And the driveway is not changing?
Yeah, no.
But we'll come back to that.
We'll come back to that, but I just wanted to note that.
Okay.
That tree shouldn't be touched. We clarified that in this presentation.
I'm sorry, which shouldn't be touched?
The tree in the front that you're...
That's what I just heard this morning, but I got a text from the representative of fourteen Reste Ever asking me on text, is it okay if this is cut? And I'm also not clear how the parking would work if that tree is in the way, so I'm hearing this for the first time.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Luciano?
Yep. My name is Luciano Perrin, I live at fifteen Reste Evergate, which is exactly across the street from the Plight site. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee member.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Staff. I will be speaking in variance, for variance number three, which I don't believe it's a minor variance whatsoever, and that variance covers the parking. The proposed site plan significantly reduces the available parking, that's shortened driveway will only fit one vehicle, and if you look at some of the pictures that were submitted for the trees, it will show that. For building housing, four units, each with multiple bedroom, at least four to six vehicles are foreseeable. This will directly and inevitably result in an overflow parking onto the street, a narrow cul-de-sac with already limited parking, not to mention that there's a parking restriction from eight to five during the day, Monday to Friday. Moreover, the applicant seeks a parking variance, acknowledging that they cannot meet the parking requirements. This further disrupts the streetscape and sets a precedent for more inappropriate front yard parking. No transportation impact report was submitted or has been provided to assess or justify this variance. In absence of such a report, the application lacks the necessary evidence to demonstrate that the increased parking demand can safely accommodate. Parking and property maintenance at fourteen Reste Evergate are already problematic today, even before considering the impacts of intensifying the site to four residential units. Currently, the owners of fourteen Reste Evergate have been cited with thirteen property standards infractions, including garbage accumulation, illegal parking on the lawn, and general maintenance violations. It took multiple complaints by neighbors before the owners even provided sufficient garbage recycling bins. This troubling maintenance history cuts serious doubt on the ability to responsibly manage the more complex, higher-density building. Additionally, there is reasonable concern based on previous infractions that this development, supported by clients, could further be converted into a six- or eight-unit building or possibly a rooming house, intensified the strain on parking property, maintenance, and the character of the neighborhood. Now, if we apply the four-part test, is this variance minor? No, no way is this a minor variance. The shortage of parking is not minor, it will significantly burden the neighborhood properties, impede emergency access, and increase risk to pedestrian safety. Number two, is the variance desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land? Again, no. A building that lacks proper infrastructure and creates predictable and hazardous street congestion is not desirable for any residential community. Number three, does the variance maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? Once again, no. The zoning bylaw requires sufficient onsite parking and prohibits front yard parking to protect the public realm and maintain safe street. And number four, does the variance maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan? No, the official plan supports orderly development and the preservation of safe, functional neighborhood streets. This proposal undermines both. Given the applicant's poor property maintenance history, the foreseeable parking chaos, the absence of transportation analysis, and the risk of future intensification beyond four units, and for this reason, Mr. Chair and council committee members, we respectfully ask that the committee deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I just want to point out that there isn't technically a parking deficiency, because the city in their wisdom has no longer requiring parking. And I know that that doesn't necessarily work in areas like Etobicoke, but that's where we're at.
Yeah, I'm sorry, am I allowed to speak?
Sure.
Yeah, I understand what the wisdom of city council is. However, it is a small cul-de-sac, there's a total...
No, we understand and totally get it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay. Susan, the next speaker?
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon.
I don't have a prepared statement, but I wanted to let my...
Before you do that, could we just get for the record, I know your name and address, but can you state it so that we can enter it in the record?
My apologies, my name is Susan Linder, I am a resident of number four Reste Evergate. I have also lived on the cul-de-sac for thirty-four years, and I wanted to voice my support and concur with my neighbors and be heard that I am also against this four-plex being built.
Is there anything else?
No.
No, okay. Short and sweet, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get Mr. Romano to come back. Is there anyone else to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
No, okay, no one in the room. So I'll get Mr. Romano to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If our staff can bring up slide number two, please, the site plan. Just want to speak to, I guess, the size of the building. This is a four-plex, thank you kindly, staff, appreciate that. So as a four-plex, it does not benefit from the provincial regulation to permit additional lot coverage, so the proposal has to comply with the existing regulated maximum thirty-three percent lot coverage that the zoning bylaw requires, and that is the case in this instance. The proposal has a lot coverage of thirty-two point nine percent, so it's not an overdevelopment of the lot. The building footprint is completely within the as of right permissions, and for some reason, the zoning examiner has included the stairs to the covered porch in the back as a platform projection. I quite honestly have never seen that before. I've seen them deal with the platform and not the stairs going from it. And in terms of the height, yes, there's a thirty-three-centimeter height variance. However, that is being compensated by larger side yard setbacks than is required by the zoning bylaw. The front yard setback basically is where the existing building is located. It could be located a little forward, so the building could actually be a little larger, up to the thirty-three percent, but that's not the case here, because you're trying to maintain what that front scape is like. And in terms of the slide number three, if staff can bring us to slide number three, again, the height variance is being compensated by the fact that the side yard setbacks are larger, certainly on one side, a lot more than on the other side, but the side yard setbacks are larger than the bylaw permits, and also the wall height. So residents may not know, however, the zoning bylaw does regulate wall height, so the measurement from established grade to the eaves, basically, is permitted to be at seven point five meters, and what is proposed is seven point two-one meters. And rather than eaves that project zero point nine meters, or three feet from those walls, as shown in the blue outline, it's a much smaller eaves projection. So the mass is being reduced, and the third floor is built within the roof line. It is true that this is a neighborhood that is not seeing a lot of regeneration occurring, but it will occur at some point, and ten meters and three stories is wholly permitted by the zoning bylaw. Rear yard setback, failed to mention this, but the rear yard setback is actually eight point zero-two to eight point five-seven meters, say the minimum seven and a half meters. Already discussed the tree, so I'm happy to answer any questions. There was a reference to the official plan, and I am a registered professional planner, so I am obligated to state for committee consideration that the general policy four-point-one-point-five provisions that were referenced by the first speaker do not apply to multiplexes. There is a site and area-specific policy that has separate criteria, in my opinion, satisfies all of those criteria, and planning staff confer. And in terms of the parking, sorry, you took the wind out of my sails, there is no parking requirement, but the proposal is contributing to onsite private parking, and there's at least two to three spaces. And the site is about a ten-minute walk from TTC service on Islington, so it's not very far from transit. Subject to any questions, I submit that the proposal is minor in nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. I'll start with a couple of brief questions. How many vehicles do you feel will fit on the existing driveway? And I'm assuming the driveway is staying exactly as it is right now, other than it being shortened?
That's correct, yeah, two to three. Depends on the size of the vehicles, but you can probably fit up to three vehicles, for sure.
Okay, but that would be tandem, like sort of one in front of the other?
No, if...
It's wide enough for two?
If one is using my Honda Civic, and you can park side by side, for sure. If one's using, you know, if one's driving an SUV, then yeah, it's going to be in tandem.
Okay, fair enough. And then my last question, on the height, do you have any examples in the neighborhood with ten meters or higher?
No, sir.
Okay, so this is sort of...
One is...
It's the starting point.
Someone's got to start somewhere, and the zoning bylaw does permit ten meters, and it permits three stories, there's no regulation.
No, no, I totally understand that.
Yeah, but this is a street, as I mentioned earlier, it's twenty-one properties, and I'm including the corner lots, they're all essentially bungalows. There might be some splits there, but they're basically one...
So there's basically, I mean, when I Googled around, I couldn't see any other three stories, but just wanted to get...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Questions from panel members? No? Okay. We'll take it into committee then for discussion and/or motion. Any discussion?
Well, I'll just say, I certainly appreciate the concerns of a street that's predominantly bungalows, and all of a sudden, there's a proposal for a ten-point-three-three-meter-tall house that appears to be three stories. However, as Mr. Romano has pointed, and I... However, as Mr. Romano has pointed, and I agree with him, we have to deal with what is permitted as-of-right and consider the difference between what is proposed relative to as-of-right. And in this case, the height difference is three of a meter difference. I don't see that as being major. I don't see a point-seven-two increase projection into the rear yard for the platform as anything other than minor. And the third and final variance relates to parking spaces, and the bylaw does not prescribe a minimum number. The only issue is whether or not a front yard parking space is advisable. And again, as Mr. Romano and the Google Street View map shows, there are a number of houses on this street that have parking spaces in the front yard. So...
No, we don't. We don't on our street.
Sorry?
We'll see driveway.
They're all driveways.
Well, they're widened. There's some that encroach under the line. I saw one.
No.
Yes, yes, there is. Anyway, that's just for discussion purposes. I don't have a problem with this application.
Yeah, there's no front yard per se, but there are driveways that have been slightly widened to accommodate more than one vehicle, so.
Can we make a comment?
No?
So, with that, I'd like to move a motion. I agree with Don. I believe the application does meet the four tests. I believe it is minor for the reasons that were just laid out. And as a result of that, I would move a motion for approval, subject to the forestry condition.
Conditions.
Plural.
Yeah, if we don't refuse, they want one and two. Okay, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, it's carried.
You just live next door.
Yeah, I'm voting, I'm opposing, but it's carried three to one. Thank you, Mr. Romano. Thank you to all the other deputies. Okay, our next item is number twenty-four. This is thirty-eight Third Street. This is an application to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. Heritage is asking for four conditions in the event of, Heritage Planning is asking for four conditions in the event of approval. Engineering and Construction Services has conditions and advisory comments. Forestry was asking for refusal, is now asking for conditions one and three. And we have two letters of support, or no, one letter of support. And Ida Evangelista is the agent. Ida, you're on line.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members. Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owner of thirty-eight Third Street.
Good afternoon. Given that this is a severance, not just a variance, there's also, I forgot, I negated to say that, I lost my spot, there are also six variances each being requested for the construction of two new duplexes in the event that the severance is approved. And given that we have all of that, and we do have other speakers, so we would like a full presentation, please.
In front of you, what we are proposing is, this is a consent application. I did submit a package that outlines all the variances that we have, and you'll see how the existing houses plotted on the lot with a vacant lot adjacent to. That is the home in front of that we are proposing today. The variances that we have are lot frontage, seven point six-two, lot area. We do have side yard setbacks, and because of the alignment of the homes in the neighborhood and on the street, we do have that front porch, the upper portion of that front porch, which they refer to as a balcony, however, it is not, it's more for aesthetic purposes, encroaches into the front yard setback, as you can see on my page three of my submission, where it outlines, so this area is predominantly, consists of lots of seven, with seven point six-two meters. We have a three-story, multi-unit building adjacent on the north side. And there is, this is an area that is undergoing regeneration and reinvestment. What we are proposing exists in the neighborhood. Our side yard setbacks in this neighborhood vary from anywhere, zero lot line, which is the multiplex to the north, and we have plethora of variances of point-two-zero, point-one-zero, point-six, and minimal with point-nine. And what we're proposing is point-six-one and one meter on north and on the south. So, I do maintain that what we're proposing is, exists in the neighborhood and characteristic to the neighborhood. We also have a variance for our roofies. As you can see on page four, I've just circled, and it refers to variance number four. And that's what's causing the roofies, because it does jut out into the required side yard setback. We are aware of the conditions with engineering, archaeology, heritage planning, I should say, and forestry, we are amenable to that. The, this area, this neighborhood consists of, you know, many one, two-story homes, diverse range of sizes. I do have some photos of what is occurring on this street, which is on page five, and what we're proposing has many characteristics of some of the newer homes that are being built in this neighborhood, and most importantly, some of the existing homes that are in the neighborhood. And that being said, I respectfully submit that our proposal will not destabilize the neighborhood, and it allows for continued evolution of the neighborhood, of the area. And the proposed variances will facilitate a reinvestment in a manner that respects the planned context and existing built form character of the neighborhood, and the minor variances are technical in nature and minor in nature. And I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Evangelista. I do have a couple of questions before I turn it over to the panel members. You made a statement about the multiplex being at a zero side yard setback. If I look at your survey, that's not what's indicated on there. And also, just wanted to have a question around, you went with point-six-one exterior side setbacks, but meter interior, and we're used to seeing applications where the larger setback tends to be on the exterior? Just trying to understand your rationale on that.
To allow additional space on the interior, we do have, and my apologies, Mr. Chair, we do have a, it varies on that multiplex, where it varies from point, or point-zero-five to one point, or sorry, point-zero-five to point-one-five on the multiplex. So, the intent was to allow, you do have space on the exterior side yard setbacks. It does allow for light and air, and the interior allows for light, air, and maintenance, just to make it a little bit wider on the interior and to allow more flow of air to the...
Don't get me wrong, I like the interior setbacks. My pet peeve is that they tend not to be sufficient, but in this case, you've kind of gone a little shy on the exterior setbacks. And the multiplex also has windows facing your site, does it not?
It does.
So, that's going to have a bit of an impact there, too. Okay, I leave it at that. Any questions from panel members? Okay, so we have some speakers. Is Nicholas first, or Catherine? Nicholas Quinn?
Just a second.
Good afternoon.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, so could we just confirm your name and address, please?
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, night. Ah, good, 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 thanks. Yeah, yeah, I'm Nick Quinn. I live at thirty-third street. It's just a few doors down, a few doors down from number thirty-eight. I generally don't have any objections. I've already spoken to someone in the planning department about my concerns, which were to make sure that somewhere within the planning cycle here, from beginning to end, you addressed the water runoff properly, because my basement was flooded, so was my neighbor at thirty-eight, so was my neighbor at thirty-two during that big event in July last year. And so, the question is, does the new lot coverage, because there's only one house there, right? There's a new lot coverage, and the treatment of the surface of the lot properly address any flooding concerns which came to light during that event? Now, I realize that this might not be the right forum to address that, but I would like to go on record as having raised this as an issue, so that if some problem happens down the road, that there's a record of it. And that's it.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you. We'll come back to you, we just want to hear all the other speakers first. So, Catherine? Is it Catherine, or is it Hans?
So, Mr. Chair, we have them both the same ages. Catherine is on line, though.
Good afternoon.
Catherine, can you hear us? You might be muted. I'm muted, so you can speak. So, Catherine, we can't hear you right now. I'm going to mute you, and unmute you again. Catherine, can you speak?
Okay, is there any, are there any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Can we try Catherine one more time?
Catherine, so we can't hear you. If possible, can you exit the WebEx and rejoin?
I'm going to come back to Ida, then. Not sure if you have much of a need for a rebut, but you've got a few minutes if you want to say something.
I would just like to address, as we know, when we're in the building permit stage, we do have to go through a lot grading and drainage plan, so that we can maintain all water on our property. And I'm sure that the owners and the architect on record will be working with the city to mitigate any potential flooding or water issues.
Catherine's still not there, I'm assuming?
I'll try her one more time. Catherine, can you speak? You're unmuted.
Okay, we tried. So, committee members, any questions?
Just a quick one. Ms. Evangelista, I think you referenced the urban forestry comments on your proposal, and they've cited, in addition to a primary recommendation of refusal, they've given alternate recommendations for their conditions one and three. Are you satisfied with the imposition of conditions one and three from urban forestry?
Through you, Mr. Chair? Yes, I am. I did meet with forestry, actually, this morning, and I am amenable to the new conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's take it into committee, then. If anyone's ready for a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. First, I'm going to make a motion on the consent and the two variances. With regard to the consent, I'm mostly impressed with the fact that the proposed lot frontages and areas are quite consistent in the immediate context, if you go up and down Third Street. I would say the majority of the lots are what are being proposed here, so I think it's quite appropriate to divide this property as proposed. And with respect to the variances, I'm satisfied that they're all minor and in keeping with all of the tests under the Planning Act. I would move approval, subject to urban forestry conditions one and three, the engineering and construction services and transportation review conditions, and the heritage planning conditions. There are four of them. So, that would be my motion to approve both the consent and the two minor variance applications.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there a second?
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Thank you, Ms. Evangelista. Okay. Item twenty-five is our next item, two fifteen Eden Bridge Drive. This is an application to construct a one-story front and rear addition and a second-story addition above the existing dwelling. There are nine variances being requested. Planning is recommending refusal. Forestry is recommending refusal, or an alternative forestry one, and we have three form letters of support. Welcome, Mr. Milchun.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chair, if I may add, there's also a condition requested by Ravine and Natural Features, condition one. Sorry if you mentioned that.
No, I mentioned forestry, but to me, they're kind of interchangeable, but that's okay. Thanks, no worries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Milchun, one ninety-two Lake Shore. I'm the agent for the applicant. This application was previously deferred in order to make some changes to the proposal. The change... The changes that have been made include a reduction in the overall height of the building, reduction in the front yard extension of the garage, and some improvements to the, to the other setbacks. We are seeking nine variances, variance for floor space index of zero point four six, which is, results in just under eight square meters of additional space, front yard setback of seven point one meters. I'd like to note that the second story will be setback thirteen point seven meters from the front yard, so quite substantially. The side yard setback on the south side, we're requesting one point one three meters, and that is for a one-story extension only. And I'd like to point out that the existing dwelling is zero point four three meters from the side yard there, so we're actually going to demolish a portion of the existing building, move that wall back, and then there's a slight addition on, on the Eden Bridge side, or the west side of the building, to compensate for what's lost on, on, sorry, the, the north side, to compensate what's lost on the south side. There's a rear yard setback of eleven point zero three meters, and if you see in my letter, there's a, a diagram there showing you that there is a small portion of the northwest corner, or sorry, northeast corner of the proposed one-story extension that just falls inside of that rear yard setback. So the bulk of that one-story extension on the rear of the property actually is, is in compliance, or exceeds the compliance required. We seek variances for length and depth. Again, this building was originally constructed in the nineteen-sixties with a building depth of twenty-six point five nine four meters, and building length of twenty-four point eight five meters. So it's, it's an existing condition that really the only difference being is mainly the garage extension on, on the front that's increasing over and above what is an existing condition. The main wall heights, side, front, and rear, we're requesting a variance of nine point one seven meters there, and I'll get into that in more detail in a moment. And we're requesting a variance for the driveway access from Eden Bridge Drive to, I forgot the name of the street, Aaronbrook Court. Even though the building as originally constructed was oriented towards Eden Bridge Drive, the front yard, the garage, the driveway, everything is on Eden Bridge Drive, the lot itself is oriented to Aaronbrook. So, the, the front of the lot is Aaronbrook. I suggest that moving the driveway from a collector road, which is Eden Bridge, to Aaronbrook Court is actually a benefit to road safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and, and motorists, and it is something that was previously approved under application A zero one ninety eighteen E Y K. So this is something that, in a previous iteration, the owners wanted to do, and committee did, did approve that, that change previously. We do have letters of support from the immediate neighbor to the south on Aaronbrook Court.
Because the time you've got left, I would focus on the main wall height, because it's the main issue for the planner.
So, Planning Department has expressed great opposition to the main wall height. We did originally have a taller proposal, we've reduced the height of the proposal, so the overall height now complies with the zoning code. And there are other examples of flat-story buildings in the neighborhood, which I've outlined in my letter, which have comparable main wall heights, or even higher main wall heights. Recent approvals next door and a few doors down, with mansard roof treatments, actually exceeded the overall height. So I think what I, my opinion of the Planning Department's concern is, it's about a quantitative concern, as opposed to a qualitative concern about what the ultimate outcome in terms of impact on the, the community and the, the street would be. I suggest that what's.
I'm gonna get you to wrap it up there.
Yeah, what's being proposed is actually quite consistent with what exists in the area, and what has recently been, been approved in terms of height and massing of the building.
Okay. And on the flip side, you don't have anybody opposing or objecting?
Not that I know of, no.
Not that I know of, yet. Okay. Just wanted to clarify, some, you, you had previous approvals, which were similar, for front yard, side yard, length, depth. What, what happened to that application? It never went forward, or?
So I wasn't involved in it, but my understanding is that the, the owners were starting to make preparations to do something, and then COVID came.
I see.
So everything was put on hold, so once we've come out of the pandemic, and they took another look at, at what their plans would be, they've, they're coming forward with some changes.
Because there wasn't a, I don't, I didn't see a main wall height approval on that one, but you, you don't know the history of it.
I don't know all the history, it's, in this case, their desire is to have a, a very modern-looking home. We did reduce the overall height, that would have required a variance in the initial application that was submitted, so we have reduced that, so it's nine point one seven meters, so point three three under the maximum allowable height, but it is a flat-roofed structure. Previous application did also have eve encroachment issues, which.
Yeah, because there was a side yard as well.
Yes.
You're not asking for.
So, so we, we've done what we can to ameliorate certain aspects of that proposal.
Yep.
And we're doing something that we think is very respectful to the neighbor to the south, by moving the, the structure further away from their property, ensuring that the garage extension that's on the front is well-removed from the side lot line, not anywhere close, and it's also quite, quite low, so it doesn't create any or much impact on the, the immediate neighbor to the south.
Thank you. Any other questions? Done?
Yes, sir. You're, you're no doubt familiar with two seventeen Eden Bridge, immediate to the northeast. Do you know, and can you tell us what the total height of that building? I, I understand that was with reference to your comment about houses with mansard roofs. There are some precedents, and perhaps that's one of them, isn't it?
It, it was recently approved by your committee with a height of ten meters.
Ten?
Ten meters. It does have what I would characterize as a mansard treatment, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, I'm not familiar with all the details of, of their drawings of the proposed to build it.
And it may have wall heights in compliance with the bylaw?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
But I guess, your, your point was total, total height is really a significant impact consideration, and due to the fact that you have a flat roof, and, and you don't need a height variance, that it's compliant with the, the community.
If, if I lived next door, or within sight of this, the overall height would be of more concern to me than the height of the main wall, because it's the overall mass of the building that's, that's of concern in terms of view, and shadow, and so on. So we're actually doing something less than the bylaw would permit, in terms of overall height and mass, and less than recent approvals. So you mentioned two seventeen, approved at ten meters, and two twenty-three Eden Bridge at ten point zero five meters. They also had a sidewall height, but that was at seven point three meters, but it's the same issue that mansard roofs, or roofs with lots of dormers have greater impact than what we're proposing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thomas, we have no other speakers?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. Let's bring it into committee, then. Is there any other questions? No? Okay. So, we have a refusal request from planning, we have no one objecting, and we have previous approvals which are similar, with the exception of the main wall height.
Well, no questions or comments? I'll, I'll make a motion. You good with that? Good, okay. So, my only concern at the outset of this consideration was the main wall heights, but I'm satisfied with Mr. Milchin's comments on the, the fact that this is a flat roof, and that the major consideration regarding massing has to do, I believe, with overall height. And this building is lower than the height maximum. So I'm satisfied that the application meets the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move approval subject to urban forestry condition one, and ravine and natural features protection, condition number one.
Okay, do we have a second? We do not have a second?
I am prepared to second that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. Popovic. All in favor? Opposed? I can't vote? It carries three to, three to one, then?
Two to one?
Sorry, two to one, two to one. Thank you, Mr. Milchin. Yep.
Just like to note, Mr. Chair, for item twenty-six, we have the owner in person, the agent is not present, so we have the owner.
Okay, so item twenty-six, twenty-five Vaudeville Drive, this is an application to construct a second-story rear yard deck, and to reduce the existing rear yard deck on the ground floor. There are two variances being requested, there are thirteen letters in support, there are two letters of objection, of neighbors who are immediately behind the proposed site, and, Ms. Jenko?
Yeah, Ms. Yenko.
Jenko, okay. Welcome.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members, my name is Yelena Yenko, and I reside at twenty-five Vaudeville Drive, which is also the subject property. I can proceed, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we're, we're gonna need an, an actual presentation, because we do have a number of people wanting to speak to this, so.
Sure.
And I think we, we've seen a number of applications in this complex prior to this, and so we kind of get the idea, but we still need you to, to go through the.
Absolutely, will do. So, good afternoon, committee members. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having allowed the deferral of our application back in January, which did enable us to engage in productive discussions with the city's planning department, and reach a, a proposal that was agreeable to them. These changes were made after direct discussions with the department, and to align with a recent decision by the committee concerning a nearly identical property at twenty-nine Vaudeville Drive, two doors down from my residence to the east. We believe that the proposed at-grade level deck and second-level deck are in keeping with the character and intent of the neighborhood, neighborhood's overall look and feel, and the requested variance are minor in nature. The kitchen and living area at our home are on the second floor. A variance to the allowable second-level deck slash balcony allows us the opportunity to enjoy more outdoor living space, and connect as a family during dinnertime, during the short window of good weather that we have in Toronto. The subdivision bylaw allows for a deck with a rear yard encroachment of one point six meters, and we are proposing three point one meters for the at-grade deck, and two point nine eight meters for the second-level deck. When contrasted with the allowable encroachment at the same level of height, or height, it is my contention that the variance is minor in nature, improves our ability to enjoy the outdoor living space. As part of my productive conversations with the planning department, the plan now also includes the additions of privacy screens on either side of the deck, on the east and west side. After considering the initial concerns raised by the planning department, and the letter of objection on file, or the letter of objection, the letters of objection on file, our new plan that is before the committee today significantly reduces the at-grade level deck. This reduction aims to make the overall design more desirable to the neighborhood, and aligns with planning's considerations. The change has also reduced total lot coverage to fifty-six percent, and the plan is consistent with the committee's approval, as I mentioned, of a similar deck in the neighborhood, where no objections or concerns were raised. In conclusion, I trust that these revisions, combined with the alignment with previous committee decisions, demonstrate my commitment to being a responsible and respectful member of the community, and trust that you will find this plan meets the four tests. I hope these revisions address the concerns raised, and align with the purpose of the bylaw. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for being brief. Don't go away in case there's any questions. Any questions from panel members?
Yeah, is there a memo or email indicating city staff support?
The last email that I have between Planning Department, Alyssa Holly, states that they would not be, they would be staying silent on this application if they have no further objections.
Okay.
There is something on file that was printed by a, a staff member, and it's an email from the city planner telling my, my agent to go ahead and resubmit the new plans to the committee, as they are sufficient, that, I think that's listed under, like, yeah, okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll have you come back in a few minutes.
Okay, should I stay or sit?
I'd have, no, have a seat. So, we have speakers online?
Yes, I will connect the first one, though.
Hi there, I believe I've just been unmuted. Name is Van Nareena, and I'm at two nine two Valeramo. I believe my husband Lionel Keynes is probably listed as a speaker, but he unfortunately had to run out to grab our kids, as this is running a bit later than expected. Expect I should be okay to speak on his behalf.
Okay, so what was your name?
It's, so what was your name? Vanna, V A N D A is my first name, last name is R A I, and.
Go ahead.
All right. Esteemed Adjustment Hearing Committee members, thank you for giving us this opportunity to give you our point of view on this whole situation and the request for this variance. I'm going to start off by saying that I do sympathize with the residents of twenty-five Vaudeville, wanting to enjoy the outdoors, and totally understand, you know, wanting to extend your space to enjoy some of the good weather, and extend, you know, your kitchen and living area. But unfortunately, I don't agree with this being at the expense of our, ourselves and the family. I understand that there were a number of letters of support that were provided, and there were two letters of objection, one from us and one from our neighbors next door. Unfortunately, if you do take a look at the letters of support, these are all from neighbors that are actually impacted in any way by the creation of the upper-level deck, and extension of this deck. And we had actually provided, along with our objection letter, a map, oh, thank you for bringing that up there. It showcases in green dots everywhere that you've got a letter of support, but those homes are impacted, and the ones directly behind the residents.
Can we just move that, so that you can see where the letters of objection are? Perfect.
Yeah. I know that there is one home right next door to this address that would be impacted, and it's impacted in a different way, because it's on the side versus with us, where everything is looking back onto our backyard and into our. where everything is looking back onto our backyard and into our private spaces. Also brings up some of the context, I think, that is missing here. As the resident mentioned, the second-level of the homes are all dining rooms, living rooms, kitchens. In comparison, the houses on Valeramo, for instance, these are our bedrooms, our bathrooms, and these are our personal, private, and intimate spaces. And when our neighbors had installed their initial deck, it was actually far too high above the fence height. And we didn't plan about this. Instead, we did the neighborly thing at the time. We installed some small trees to retain that sense of privacy, and this was at a substantial cost to ourselves. And we never made this a big deal. We objected. We didn't do anything of that. And now to extend the second-level deck would be unacceptable from a privacy standpoint. Anyone standing up on that deck would be able to look directly into our children's bedrooms and even into the bathroom. The zoning bylaw, as mentioned, is 1.6 meters. There isn't that space between our homes. And just having that higher vantage point, you'd be looking into our yards and also directly into my son's bedroom that has a bathroom attached to it. And to be honest, we mulled this over. We thought about it quite a bit and didn't land on this decision to object overnight. There were a number of instances that sort of solidified our decision. My husband was meant to speak directly on these, but just in general, like, we've had more than one instance of our kids playing outside and being... This is prior to us putting up trees, feeling uncomfortable as to why there's a group of people, adults, sitting on a deck that's way above, you know, the six-foot fence, like, in terms of their vantage points, looking at our kids. Our daughter, a toddler at the time, came in saying, "Oh, why is that man watching me?" And our kids should not be safe in their own homes, and I can't imagine somebody standing up on a deck, taking a glass of wine, and my son can't freely go to his wife's bedroom or, you know, have his blinds open. That would really be an invasion of our privacy. And should also mention, I mean, even with the lower-level deck until we got our trees, I funny myself, I'm a grown woman, an adult, making a coffee in my kitchen in PJs because I felt like, you know, anyone on their deck could look into our kids. Anyway, so that's saying, I mean, is this application minor in nature? No, it isn't. It's beyond the minimum setback limit, as mentioned. The zoning bylaw states that this is 1.6 meters. And is it keeping in what the general intent and purpose? No, as this would be considered an overlooking structure. And in closing, I'm rejecting this proposal as a parent, as a mother, that my private spaces, whether it's my backyard, our bedrooms, or bathroom of my young kids, are not open for public viewing.
Sorry, we've lost you. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, what was... Sorry, where did you lose me?
Well, you've been kind of fading in and out your whole presentation, but at the end, you just sort of said why you felt as a mother it's not acceptable. I'm not sure what you said after that.
Okay, so what I had mentioned at that point was, as a mother, I just feel that my private spaces, whether it's the backyard, our bedrooms, the bathrooms of my young kids, are open for public viewing, and I think that is basically the sticking point for me in terms of why I would reject this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from panel members? No? Okay. Our next speaker.
Hello, my name is Stephen Laurel. I just wanted to say hello to the Committee of Adjustments. I live at two-ninety Valeramo, directly behind twenty-five Vaudeville. I have a couple concerns. The main concern is privacy. This elevated deck would overlook our yard, our home, and our children's bedrooms, as well as my neighbor just mentioned. This would compromise our privacy and our peaceful environment of our backyard and in our home. The Madamie subdivision, the lots are pretty small and in close proximity, so it doesn't allow much privacy. So, whatever we do have, we would like to keep, and this deck would significantly reduce that amount of privacy. I don't feel that this is a minor variance. The proposed deck is almost four times the size of the existing one. It doesn't fall within the city bylaw limits. It's not in line with the original plan of the subdivision constructed by Madamie Homes. What else? The financial burden is a big thing for us because we're gonna have to invest in some trees and possibly some screening. Not even sure if that would be able to mitigate the vantage point of this proposed deck. The letters of support, which our neighbor just pointed out, have no direct connection to this deck. It would not be affecting them in any way, whereas it would affect me directly in multiple aspects. My children's bedrooms are in the backyard, right in line with the view of their deck. And I find myself scared in order to keep the blinds open, which would limit our natural light intake. And just having my kids be kids, right? You know, kids don't really walk around dressed most of the time, and having my windows open would subject them to unwanted views from other people. And with that being said, I just respectfully decline the proposed deck. And yeah, that's my part right there.
Thank you. At least you were really clear. And yeah, I would suggest all the other... Or the other letters of support are from people who may be wanting the same thing, but that's just my take on it. Anyway, are there any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I will ask Ms. Yenko to come back up. It's your chance to sort of respond to what they've said.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think initially I'll respond on the notion of privacy and also keeping within the character of the neighborhood. So, as we just heard and read, neighbors located at two-ninety and two-ninety-two Valeramo Drive are two of the objecting addresses that have written an objection letter. The main concern in both letters is privacy. I, of course, sympathize with the neighbors' concerns around privacy, however contend that the deck proposed is in keeping with the overall look and feel of the neighborhood. The family at two-ninety Valeramo Drive have a very large balcony on the third level of their home. This balcony faces directly into our master bedroom and provides a full and unobstructed view of our home and backyard. Another home on that side of Valeramo, at night two-ninety-six Valeramo, also has the same balcony, again with an unobstructed view of many neighboring homes and backyards. This is not a criticism of the choice, as I understand the need for having outdoor living spaces, especially in an area as densely populated as ours. It only serves to demonstrate that the deck we are proposing is within the character and desirable for our development. Further to that point, the approved plans at twenty-nine Vaudeville were uncontested, including by two-ninety and two-ninety-two Valeramo Drive. And this is a second-level deck of the same size and height as what we are proposing. Once again, this serves to demonstrate that this is in keeping with the style of the neighborhood. The proposed variance to the deck is simply to have enough space so we can enjoy an outdoor living space for our family. Given that a second-level deck or balcony is already allowed, albeit with a permit, at a 1.6-meter encroachment, I would posit that there is no appreciable difference in terms of privacy, given that this would be at the same height. The subdivision we live in, known as Ald Ridge, that was built here by Madamie Homes, also has a number of homes on the north side that feature a third-level balcony. I believe it's sixteen homes, which once again serves as additional proof that what we are proposing is in keeping with the overall look and feel of the neighborhood. The two neighbors objecting have also stated their objection to the letters written, that the support letters are received not from those immediately impacted by the proposed plans. I'd like to address this next. Firstly, a large number of support letters were received from neighbors who received a notice about the proposed plans from the committee, driving me to believe that their opinion on the matter was deemed to be an important one to those who are making this decision today. The letters sent in from two-ninety Valeramo Drive contends that the letters center from our friends, thereby suggesting that their relevance or value is diminished. We live in a neighborhood that is close-knit and friendly. I cannot contend the fact that a number of the letters written are by people who are neighborly with us, but certainly a number of them are not people that we associate with as friends in any way. Finally, some of the support letters received from the north side of the neighborhood, the even numbers on Vaudeville Drive. While it is true that they cannot directly see our backyard, they are all residents of the same Madamie-built subdivision, and I believe are well-placed to speak to the fact that the proposed plan is in keeping with the overall look and character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you go, any questions?
I have a question. You're the homeowner.
Yes.
Has any consideration or discussion been made to put privacy screens on your deck, the proposed deck?
We have added privacy screens on the east and west side, which, of course, does not address the concerns that the neighbors immediately behind us have brought forward. When I spoke to the planning department, I asked whether privacy screens is something that people put up on the front of their deck, and she said that it's not usually the case. I also would posit that if we did that and we had privacy screens on the side and in the front, it would completely block all of the sunlight that's coming in because those are all windows on the back of my home.
The level that you're at now, where the second-floor deck is, is that off of a kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, and what's on the ground floor? What's off of that deck?
There is currently a deck there.
Yes, and when you walk in through the door into your house, what are you walking into?
Oh, sorry, when you walk into the front door of my house?
No, the deck that's in your backyard, what is it adjacent to?
Oh, sorry, it's like a living space, like a family room.
Okay, so... And the bedrooms are on the third level, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's any discussion, now would be the time.
Yeah, I'm wondering if staff can tell us what this committee approved for twenty-nine Vaudeville Drive, as alleged by the owner of twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, I recall having that before us, but...
I do too. I'm just curious about the extent of the encroachment, the rear yard encroachments that we apparently approved.
No. No. Now, twenty-nine, does that face... Oh, no, that would face...
Faces south.
But the backyard would face another backyard, yeah, within the same complex.
So, are you looking for the coverage or the encroachment?
I guess both. What variances did we approve for twenty-nine?
So, coverage, fifty-two point eight percent. And this one is fifty-six. And the deck would encro... For that one, encroach three point one.
Three point one?
Yeah.
Which is the same as this one. Same encroachment and slightly more coverage.
Am I done with speaking?
Sorry, they're not asking you questions, right?
Oh, sorry.
On coverage.
The only difference is that's interior to the same complex, whereas this is on the exterior to single-family homes. But they're similar vintage because when you look at Google, they're under construction at the same time as the townhouses. And I don't see an elevation change. Sure, we'll take the meters if you got it. How big? It's okay. We all have them. So, the privacy screens, where is that covered? Is it in the plans?
Yeah, I saw them.
No, it doesn't. I just wanted to make sure that that's covered as well. Yeah, there they are, okay. Because if you do choose to approve this, you're gonna have to tie it to drawings to ensure the privacy screens get installed, no? You know, I have a recollection of the very first one of these that came up in this complex.
Just a bit of irony.
And we refused the first one because we were concerned that it would set a precedent for everyone else. Right? And I believe it was appealed, and it was, if I'm not mistaken, it was granted on appeal, and then we had the next one come to us. And we said, "Well, they were granted on appeal, so we couldn't refuse the second one." And that's how we wound up where we are.
But number twenty-one wasn't granted on appeal. That was a Committee of Adjustment decision. Correct, Barb? But I guess that followed the T-Lab.
I believe so.
Yeah, I can remember. I think you and I probably sat on both of these. So, T-Lab, I guess, set in our mind a precedent, and sure enough...
Yeah, and that was why we had a big debate on the initial, the first application. Yeah, we didn't let it out.
Well, it's important to remember, number one, one application doesn't make a precedent. It's an anomaly. But number two, you're not bound by precedent.
Yeah, right.
So, you do take into consideration what exists in the neighborhood? But... It's ultimately your decision based on the four tests.
Yeah, no, I understood. I just thought it would be good for members to get that history, to understand where we were coming from. Because I suspect that was in our first term, so we would have been the only two. No, you weren't there. Okay. Unless there's more discussion or you want to reopen it for questions, I guess it's time to make a decision. And the reduction, Barb, the reduction of the ground-floor deck, like, why is that? I mean, there... I guess that's part of the package. Again, do we have to... How do we tie all of this together to make sure that that's what happens? Because you get the variances approved. It doesn't matter what's in the description.
Sorry, it does because in the previous application, there was a ground-floor deck as well. So, the projection is only permitted.
I see.
The variance that's before you is only for the middle level.
Okay, but the ground level already exists. Okay, but the ground level already exists.
So, but because they're not seeking a variance for that, they won't be able to get clearance.
Unless they cut it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
So whether they need a permit for it, or whether there's an order to comply, whatever this case, whatever brought them here, they won't be able to clear that up unless they actually reduce that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not missing any pieces.
I'm not sure how, like, why they ended up here, or... I don't see an order to comply.
No. Sorry, we're gonna reopen. Did you apply for a building permit?
So, what, oh my gosh, I'm really sorry. So, for the first level deck, so for the level at the ground floor, we had a contractor that was building three decks and the neighborhood built ours as well. At the time, there was confusion around zoning bylaws in our neighborhood, and when he had checked, apparently, the former city of Etobicoke bylaw number, eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven was thought to have applied. So, this very large deck was built in our backyard that covers a really large portion of the backyard. That was the main issue that planning had brought up when we brought this application back in January, which is why I requested deferral, so that we can deal with that issue. So, we are now proposing that that deck in the backyard be significantly reduced from six point three eight meter encroachment to three point one meter encroachment, to align with, with planning's concerns.
And the second floor deck is original as constructed?
The second floor deck has not been constructed, so...
So there's nothing there?
There is like a tiny deck that was built there by the builder.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry, yes. I'm not even sure of the dimensions of that one. It's like this wide, and this far out.
It's a platform, yeah.
Yes.
But there is something there, because you're not installing new doors and anything.
Yeah, like, it's enough to fit our barbecue.
Yeah, okay.
But are you reducing the ground floor deck from...
Yes. The ground floor deck is being reduced from six point three eight meters to three point one meters. The second level deck is at two point nine eight meter encroachment.
And the three point one is the same length as twenty-nine Vaudeville?
Yes, and...
Which is why I guess planning is supporting it. That's why I asked if you had something new from planning, because it'd be helpful if they had put this in writing, because then we'd have the clarification.
Yeah, so that was the back and forth I had with planning, is that they wouldn't be able to support anything further what was approved at twenty-nine Vaudeville Drive already. And we had some back and forth around the lot coverage, because what was approved for twenty-nine Vaudeville Drive was fifty-two point eight percent, whereas what we're requesting is fifty-six percent. However, after a little bit of back and forth with zoning, I learned that the difference lies in the presence of an awning over the front of our front porch and steps. So our homes are identical, it's just that twenty-nine Vaudeville does not have an awning over their front steps, whereas we do, so it counts toward total lot coverage. For us, whereas it does not for them.
Yep, right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Absolutely. Well, it's always like that. What you think is the simplest one is never the simplest one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, now we know what we're dealing with. We have most of the history, I think. We have the comments from the affected neighbors. What do you guys want to do?
Okay, I'm gonna throw this out here. So, I'd like to move a motion for approval. I do believe the application meets the four tests. And there are no conditions.
Barb, on an approval motion, do we need to tie it to any of the plans? Or the variances themselves will prevent them from doing anything beyond what's here? Okay, what about the privacy screens?
I think ultimately, it benefits the applicant the most to have the privacy screens, because the houses are fairly close. So they're probably not going to want people.
No, I understood, but, okay.
Because the people that are concerned are from Valerima.
Right, but I think the people adjacent are not concerned because the privacy screen, you could also argue that they're not concerned because they're getting privacy screens. The ones to the sides.
So you can put in a condition, the privacy screens shall be installed as illustrated on the
That's...
...plan submitted with the application.
Are you wanting to include that, Bill?
Install screen?
As illustrated on the plan submitted with the application. Because it's shown on the floor plan and on the elevation.
Well, if there's a second or the second or can add that.
Yeah, then add sheets A five, six, and seven. Those are the elevation section and details. Because that's where it would land.
Okay. Do you want to add that, or to your motion?
Okay, so I'll not sign my motion for approval, as I do believe the application meets the four tests, subject to privacy screens being added. And they are to be added to drawings A, five...
As, as shown in drawings?
A, five, six, and seven.
Perfect.
Inclusive.
Is there a second or?
Oh, a second. Reluctantly.
Okay, Don, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? And I can't be, so, it's, yeah. I'm abstaining. So it passes on a split vote. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the other presenters as well. Do you want, do we want to do a break, or do you guys? Okay. Yeah, okay, so, what time is it now? Till ten after, or? Four-ten? Okay, thanks. Give me a chance to get caught up on my notes.
Well, twenty-seven is deferred, and twenty-eight, twenty-eight is your conflict, right? Because then you've got twenty-nine after that. Oh, no.
I gotta tell ya.
Probably, yeah. It increases the value of property, considering it adds a lot of living space. And they just say, hey, take a look at twenty-nine. Too bad. Dying fast. Hope she realizes how lucky she is.
Because I think if Laura were here, it probably would have been a few.
Probably.
Because I would have voted against it.
So, Collins is gonna take the next one to come out. Two weeks?
Yeah.
These are all, these are all support.
Yeah.
Two residences. Yeah, shouldn't be too bad. This is the bear though. It's an hour. Okay, Thomas, are we good? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for indulging us on the break. Item twenty-seven has been deferred, so we're on to item twenty-eight, which is fifty-four twenty-one and fifty-four twenty-nine Dundas Street West. This is an application to convert the existing second and third floor non-residential use into residential uses. There are four variances being requested. Metrolinks has advisory comments. There are, there's one objection, and there's one support document from the public, and transportation is saying they are now okay. And agent is in person. Mr. Petrov?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Member of Committee. My name is Ali Reza Partovi, and I'm here on behalf of Pinnacle International, the owner of the office space at fifty-four twenty-five Dundas Street West, which is the subject of this application.
Thank you. I think we're gonna need a full presentation on this item, if you're ready to go.
Okay. As you may recall, our application was recommended for the deferral on March sixth hearing following comments from the City Transportation Review. Since then, we have worked closely with Transportation SF and have revised variance number four accordingly. As noted in the most recent memo for under city, the City Transportation Review the City Transportation Review has no objection to this, to the revised variance. The office space in question, located on level two and three with access from level one, has been actively marketed for the past five years. Despite ongoing efforts, it remained vacant due to lack of demand. At the same time, we know that there is a growing need in the city for rental residential units, specifically in the area with a strong access to the public transit. This raises a practical concern about continuing to keep the space vacant. Originally, this space was included in bylaw number seven-six-nine two thousand sixteen, which required non-residential growth floor area to be provided in two buildings, building one and building four. However, building one was subsequently rezoned and that requirement was carried forward under bylaw two hundred six two thousand twenty-two, which applies to the broader master plan. The updated bylaw secures a greater amount of non-residential GFA than that was required under the two thousand sixteen bylaw. That non-residential space will now be delivered as a part of phase six of this development, as outlined in the new bylaw. In addition, while the proposed interior fit up will add new residential unit, is triggered a requirement for seventy-four square meters of outdoor amenity spaces, which we are addressing this through provision of seventy-four square meters of additional indoor amenity spaces. This brings the total indoor amenity area to one hundred fifty-four square meters. The parking garage has already been constructed, occupied and registered. We are proposing to retain three hundred twenty residential spaces as is with no changes. These spaces continue to meet their minimum requirement as set out in the current bylaw. We're also proposing to reallocate the surplus office parking spaces within the non-residential parking area. This strategy was developed in response to concern raised during the City Transportation Review regarding the shared use of parking between the residential and non-residential area. In response, we engaged the transportation consultants and held a review with, meeting with the city transportation staff. In closing, we believe the requested variances meet the four tests set out in the section forty-five one of the Planning Act. Subject to any question, Mr. Chair and Member of Committee, I respectfully request the committee approves these variants and grant the application.
Thank you, sir. I will start with a couple of questions. What you describe as a non-residential parking ninety-nine spaces, is that paid parking?
Yeah, it is a paid park.
So you're essentially doing commercial paid parking with those spaces?
Correct.
Your original proposal had three hundred and twenty, um, units? No, sorry, two hundred and ninety-five units. You're now going to propose three hundred and thirty-two units, correct? Residential units?
We, we have thirty-two, three hundred twenty residential parking. Oh, in total, yes, three hundred thirty-two units, correct. We are adding thirty-seven more spaces.
You're adding thirty-seven residential units?
That's correct.
But you're not adding any parking spaces, correct?
That's correct, because the current parking requirement meets the bylaw. It's above the minimum requirement of the bylaw, it's at the middle between the maximum and minimum.
No, I, I, I understand that, but you, you, you do have the option to add those if you wanted to.
Correct.
Um, but you're choosing not to.
The reason we-
And you're also choosing not to change any of the visitor parking ratio?
No, we, we, we added three more spaces visitor parking.
You're adding three, okay.
No, we, we, proportionately, we added a visitor's parking. We only didn't add the residential parking.
Okay, so you are adding to the visitor parking?
Correct.
But not to the allocation for the residential units?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Um, I think, I don't know if panel members have any questions? We have a number of speakers, so I'm gonna ask you. If there's no questions, I'll ask you to sit down and then we'll go through the other chairputons. Okay, so, um-
So, Mr. Chair, just wanted to make you aware that so there's other two agents. They were just there for support, any like technical questions, so.
Okay, so Anson Kwak is part of the applicant, is part of the applicant?
Yes, and Stephen.
And Steve as well, okay.
Yep.
So then the area residents, are they virtual or in person?
So, um, I believe Oliver is in, Oliver? Oliver, oh. I guess he's not here? Sorry, sir, is your name Oliver? Are, are you Oliver? Oh, no. So, I guess they were on and they logged off, because I checked them. So, they currently aren't online. Uh, Cheryl Anne D'Souza is online, though.
Okay, well, let's have her come up. Yeah, no, that's what I mean, sorry.
Yes, hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thanks for allowing me to speak.
Okay, um, so, we're just, we're just gonna get your address, um.
Yes, my name is Cheryl Anne and I live at fifty Thomas Riley Road, which is in the same building where, uh, the adjustment is being asked for.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I did submit a letter stating the concerns of two hundred and ninety-five units, I believe, are in the condo at fifty Thomas Riley Road. And our concerns are mostly around, um, so, so basically, um, what, what they're suggesting is that they're going to make, change the second and third floor on the front side of the building. That's going to end up the entire area becoming a construction zone for two hundred and ninety-five units that are already in the building. As well as there's going to be dust, there's going to be a lot loud sounds. I don't know how they are going to do this, this, uh, this change, because they're gonna have to put in bathrooms, they're gonna have to put in kitchens. Uh, the road that actually accesses the building at the, on the left side is a very narrow temporary road. Uh, the retail units in the building are parking on that road and causing congestion. Um, and if they're gonna have further construction activity here, I don't know how we are going to be able to manage. It's going to create chaos in the area. Uh, other details where we had concerns was around the builder not being very, very transparent with us around whatever changes that they, uh, you know, in the past two or three years that we've been dealing with them. They have not been transparent with us. And we're not too sure as to how, uh, how they're going to, um, how they're going to, uh, use the power, et cetera, in the building, because we don't know if they have separate metering available for that. My letter actually details all of our concerns and I'm hoping that you have had a chance to review it.
Okay, I believe your concerns are really more construction related and not planning related with regards to the variances that are being sought, so. Um, is, are there any concerns you have about that area being converted to residential as opposed to it remaining as office? Not related to construction?
Right, but how are they going to convert it if they don't have construction? They're gonna have construction, right?
Well, even if they weren't converting it and it was left as office, they would still need to do build-out, there would still be construction. You would be faced with that either way. If you have a noise issue, your recourse will be to, to complain to the Buildings Department and/or bylaw, uh, bylaw enforcement. It's not up to us to stop, to prevent them from constructing because it's gonna create noise.
Okay, and what about the congestion on the road? On the service road that is accessing the building?
That would be the same answer.
Okay. Bringing forward my concerns since, um, since we, we got the notice, uh, I understand what you're saying. Um, but, um, I consider these valid concerns from the residents in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No, um, sorry, is the other speaker available or?
No, they haven't logged on, they just logged up, I guess.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak to the, to this item? No? Okay, I'll get the applicant to come back to, uh, I guess, address what was said.
Uh, we have reviewed concerns submitted by the two residents at fifty Thomas Riley Drive, uh, road, and I'd like to offer some clarification responses. The road on the west side of the property is a temporary measure. The overall master plan is tied to an active subdivision file, which will result in a mix of public and private roads. The future road network will replace the existing narrow streets on the west side of the property with more permanent and appropriate layout. The current road will be replaced by a public park, will be constructed by, uh, Pinnacle. A space on level two is currently unfinished shell space. As the chair mentioned, regardless of the proposed use, the tenant needs to go to tenant's area and get the permit and construction board will be ongoing on this file, regardless of the use of that, uh, building. Finally, it's, uh, important to note that the converting the space to residential use will help to reduce concern typically associated with non-residential activity near the condominium building, particularly in community, a community that already houses two hundred ninety-five units. These changes support a more compatible and consistent use with the context of the existing residential development. Also, regarding the question regarding the office parking, these, this will be rent out as a month, on a monthly basis, because we are thinking on a rental building. So every tenant will have the opportunity to rent the, uh, in, in this building, to rent parking in this building. Also, this site is located next to the Kipling subway station and go transit. So therefore, uh, I, I think it's more accessible site compared to the, uh, so the tenant can rely on the public transit as well.
So are, are you saying that the, the new residential units are going to be rental?
Yes, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, and you, and so my question then comes back to the two hundred and ninety-five units that currently exist. They already have parking allocated to them, do they not?
Correct.
And how many of the three hundred and twenty parking spaces are already allocated to the two hundred and ninety-five units?
Uh, that's a question maybe I can, if you, I can ask my colleague to answer that question.
So out of the, the three hundred twenty parking spots, those are registered to the condominium?
Sorry, we need your name and address.
Sorry, Anson Kwak. Um, One Young Street, Suite six hundred, Toronto.
So the two hundred and ninety-five units are condo units?
Correct.
And how many parking spaces of the three twenty are allocated to those condo units?
So three hundred twenty are registered to the condominium at this time?
Okay, so you've essentially used all of your parking. And now you're proposing, um, how many, thirty-seven units with zero parking?
There was a office allocation previously, and then we're, we're just opening it up so there's flexibility to those spots.
Yeah.
It's more than thirty-seven.
Okay. So it's gonna, so basically, you're still offering zero spots because none of those are gonna be allocated to the rental units. They're gonna, there's just going to be paid parking available if you want it.
Or monthly parking with the rental, yeah. That's correct.
Okay. I get it, I just, uh, because if you were to add some of those back in, uh, to the residential component, you still wouldn't be beyond the maximum of the parking bylaw.
Yeah, I think the site conditions is that there is a current commercial parking lot and then there's two secure, uh, garage doors for the three hundred twenty. So having another door, uh, to impede would create kind of a logistical challenge to existing homeowners.
And there's no intent to eliminate, you know, the ninety-nine parking spaces that are there, obviously?
They're, they're all built, they all exist.
What kind of parking demand are you getting?
Uh, quite minimal at this point.
Okay. Okay, fair enough, thank you.
I had a question about the rental units. Um, will they be geared to affordable rental amounts or market rental amounts?
Market rental, sorry. Market rental.
Thank you.
Was there any discussion with planning as to the mix of the rental units in terms of, uh, number of bedrooms, et cetera?
Sorry, there was a conversation with planning and only they introduced, we, we had reviewed this planning prior to make the submission. They introduced a financial contribution for this file. No, we didn't talk about the number of bedroom or how many, uh-
How many one bedroom, how many two bedroom, yeah, that didn't, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have questions or? Okay, I guess we'll take it into committee.
Well, I'm going to start by saying that I do not see, I've heard the opposition, we've seen the opposition matter. I do not see any objections from internal staff, uh, reports. And on the basis of at least some additional rental housing, although I know it's not affordable rental housing, it is some. I believe on that basis, I'm going to move to approve as it generally meets the four tests.
I'll second the motion, just a bit of commentary. I classify this as a pandemic-related application. I dare say that in the absence of the pandemic, this space would be fully occupied by non-residential uses and you wouldn't be here, am I right? That being said, I support my colleagues' observations related to this application and I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Before we vote on it, I just wanted to make a comment and that's, um, if you had a greater demand, and I can understand why you don't, uh, for the rental, um, parking spaces, I, I, I would like to have put in some kind of condition that some percentage of that be reserved for the rental units. But I suspect we're not gonna have that. You, you, your market, the market's gonna determine that anyway, so. Okay, fair enough, um, all in favor? Okay, unanimous approval, thank you. Um, yeah, we can take Bill out of purgatory. Okay, uh, item twenty-nine, um, thirty-nine York Lee Avenue. This is a application to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. Um, there are the related, uh, applications for variances related to applications to construct new detached dwellings with attached garages, uh, with two variances on the first one and four variances on the second one. Um, Heritage Planning is requesting conditions of approval. In the event that we should approve, Forestry is recommending refusal or in the alternative conditions two and three. And we have a number of speakers on this and the agent is?
President.
Andrew Palumbo, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, again, uh, members of the committee, committee of adjustment staff. My name is Andrew Palumbo of Ian Hall Planning Limited. My address is thirty-eight Betty Nagel Street in Toronto and I am the planner and agent for thirty-nine York Lee Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we're gonna need a full presentation.
Absolutely. Um, before I get into my full, uh, presentation on the variances, is it possible, before my five-minute starts, I would like to give, uh, give context to the deferral request. That was, if not, I can try and get through the five minutes as fast as possible. But I'll just, or I could just proceed and we'll go from there.
That's fine, if you want to give us some, yeah, this was deferred preview from a-
And I'll try and be brief, this is the last one of the day, it's been a long day. I'll try and just be brief and to the point. Uh, so since the deferral, uh, my client and I met with the urban forestry staff to discuss the proposal and the possibility of obtaining a supportive staff report from them. Upon meeting with staff, uh, what they actually recommended, uh, was a revised driveway design. Their concern is with the proposed part two. Um, they recommended a design that would potentially require the full removal of one tree and the full protection of another. That was their suggestion and ultimately, even despite that suggestion, it was one of those situations where, because of the way the bylaw requirements are written for the tree protection by law, they would still have to issue a refusal report, even based on the direction that they gave us. So on this basis-
No, we, we get that. You, you don't need to explain it, we got it.
Oh, just, I have to give you full context, but as a result, um, my client decided to proceed as is and is basically gonna proceed on the basis of trying to design the driveway and undertake mitigation within the tree protection zones as the, the process proceeds in the event of an approval. So not, not outright remove one tree and protect another, but proceed as per the recommendations of his certified Arborist report that he obtained. In addition, it was also recommended to undertake, um, uh, dialogue with the neighbors. I do understand that my client spoke to one of the, uh, local area residents, Mr. Joe Kennedy, uh, and basically they respectfully agreed to disagree. And, uh, that, that's why we're here today also, just obviously discuss and deliberate that before this panel. And I also know my client made attempts to reach out to the adjacent neighbor at thirty-five York Lee, because I, I believe there were issues raised at the previous hearing as well, but unfortunately with no luck. And prior to this hearing, I can confirm- And prior to this hearing, I can confirm that the adjacent neighbor to the west at 45 Yorkley actually has submitted a letter of support. So effectively, as my understanding is, one neighbor is not supportive of adjacent neighbor and one neighbor is. So sort of a divided opinion there. I will now quickly outline the proposed variances before the committee today for proposed Parts One and Two that are being created by the requested severance. So with respect to Part One, which is the westerly lot, apart from the proposed 16.7-meter frontage whereby 21 meters is the standard, the only resulting variance to implement an entirely new dwelling is a variance to increase the proposed front and rear stair widths. And I think it's important to note here as well that in the case for both Parts One and Two that are being created, there are no variances required to reduce the minimum lot area. So as such, the resulting lot areas themselves actually do comply in both cases, but they are substandard from a lot frontage standpoint only. So apart from the numerical deviation for lot frontage, there are no corresponding significant built form variances to implement a new build on Part One as I've just described. So in other words, there's no variances required for a GFA or FSI increase, lot coverage increase, building or main wall height increase, building length or depth increase, setback reduction, and landscape open space reduction. So overall, in my opinion, this suggests that the proposed dwelling is not representative of an overdevelopment, but rather a development that's actually appropriate and a good fit for the lot in which it's being created. Again, there's only a variance required for stair width in order to make way for an entirely new dwelling and a newly created parcel in this neighborhood. Like I've been before this committee several times and it's often that I'm actually trying to support and justify some of the variances in association with what I just mentioned when once a lot is severed. In addition, and as part of the planning justification letter submitted on my behalf on Pages Eight and Nine, these provide photo evidence of a presence of existing substandard lots along the north and south sides of Yorkley Avenue. And thus, it is my opinion that the proposed Part One lot and the dwelling resulting on this lot will have a similar perception from the streetscape as these other substandard lots that are part of the existing character of this neighborhood. So similarly, with respect to Part Two, which is the easterly created lot, in this case, the resulting lot actually has a wider frontage of 19.13 meters, less of a numerical deviation than proposed Part One. And the same principle applies here in this case with respect to the fact that there are no significant built form variances with this dwelling either. Apart from the lot frontage reduction, there's variances required for stair width, rear platform size, but all of which are minor, and front yard setback reduction. I'll quickly speak about that. With respect to this front yard setback reduction, the one thing I did want to point out is that although it is being proposed at 14.88 meters, which is 1.9 meters off from the standard, this setback still maintains, which is pretty important in my opinion, the large open front yard character when compared to other dwellings specifically on the south side of Yorkley. Furthermore, I do wanted to point out that the proposed setback for Part Two is actually providing a greater setback than the adjacent neighbor to the east at 35 Yorkley, which provides an existing setback of 13.05 meters from the street. And that is 1.83 meters shorter than what's being proposed for Part Two on the subject site. That's shown visually as Figure Seven on Page 14 of my planning justification letter and that was taken from the survey submitted with this application. So on this basis, there are no resulting new or adverse impacts with respect to the proposed front yard reduction. Still maintains that open character and tree presence as you see in this neighborhood. Lastly, I do note that planning had recommended in their report to the C of A that this application proceed to be scheduled with no further staff report, which infers that at minimum, they have no objection to this application. And I would ask the committee to consider, when looking at other lots on Yorkley, there are very few other lots with the significant frontage and the width that would lend itself to be severed into two with the resulting variances that are needed in order to implement these new dwellings. So on that note...
Thank you.
Yep. I have one more line.
Go ahead.
In conclusion, my opinion, the proposed severance resulting variances meet the four tests for minor variance under the Planning Act, represent good planning and should be approved by this committee. Thank you very much for your time and attention on this this afternoon.
Okay. Any questions from committee members? No?
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone in the room to speak to this before we go to online? Come on up.
Okay, for the record, my name is Joseph Kennedy. I live at 7 Yorkley Avenue and this is my fourth appearance with the Committee of Adjustment on exactly the same issue, okay? Different property this time. Is it possible to bring up my submission, which I sent in a couple days ago? Please, thanks. No, that's not the right one. That's from the deferred meeting. I put a new submission in for this meeting. Yep.
Is it any additional?
So just scroll down a little bit. Okay, so what we're looking at here is a petition that we put around the neighborhood a few years ago. We got over 100 signatures stating that they want the bylaws and the large lots on Yorkley and Leggett to be maintained. 100 people, it was sent to our counselor, Stephen Holliday, and it's a matter of public record. If we go down six, seven pages, please, I'll tell you when to stop. That's one, two, three, four, five, six. Stop there. Nope, back. Keep going to the three signatures. Little further. Up. Okay, you'll notice the middle one is 39 Yorkley Avenue, which is the applicant. And if you go to the next page, you'll see that the husband and wives of 39 Yorkley were all for maintaining big lots. Okay, thank you. Now...
They'll claim they're still maintaining big lots.
Yep. So really, we're here about the preservation of our neighborhood. The simple reality is that we have a 70, well, let's say, call it a 69-foot bylaw. With 8 Yorkley, you moved it to three feet less and now we're asking to go from 21 to 16.7, which is 4.3 meters and about 20% of the frontage. If this is approved, there'll be 10 more lots that can be severed in our neighborhood. And then if you take one step, there'll be another eight for 18 or 27% of our neighborhood will be subdividable. At this point, our neighborhood is done. It's no longer nice big lots and lots of trees. We've already talked about the fact that they got to kill a couple of trees, but once you kill a couple, a couple more, a couple more, doesn't matter. The issue here is that this committee can choose to allow our neighborhood to survive in as an enjoyable place with large lots and nice trees, or you can destroy it and allow it to be severed and become just like the other parts of our neighborhood, which are quite nice, but not quite as nice as our road. Okay? If we continue down, we're just going to go through some quick pictures of a neighborhood that may not exist in 10 years. So just keep going. There'll be pictures mostly of trees, but there's actually houses hidden in among them. It takes a while to get through 100 signatures. Okay, so now we just have pictures of houses and trees. So in the back left, where you can see all the houses, that's Hill Garden. And on the right, you can't see any houses, that's Yorkley. So just keep zipping through and I want to go to the last picture. Just scroll it right down to the end because we're using up my speaking time here. Okay, and then try to zoom that so that you can actually see the whole picture. That's just a zoom in. Zoom out, zoom out, zoom out. So now what we're looking at is what happens when we don't enforce bylaws. This was divided. This is 8 Yorkley. It's now a rooming house. There's eight cars in that picture, some in the backyard, some are at work, so they're not all there. There's a motorbike. Up to 18 people living in that house unrelated. The police are there all the time. Last week, there was only three cop cars there. This is what refusing to enforce bylaws looks like to the people who have to stay behind. The developer's never going to build. He's flipping the property for a million profit. And until he sells it, which he may never sell it at that price, I get to look at this. Thank you very much. Now, ultimately, there's no appeal of your decision. If you say yes, we cannot appeal anymore, as it was pointed out earlier, it's over for us. It's the end of our neighborhood and you have ultimate and complete power, which I'm asking you to use wisely and compassionately. But you don't have to because no one can challenge you. Nobody. I'm asking you to preserve our neighborhood. A 20% reduction in frontage is nonsense. At that point, the city bylaws don't exist. Throw them away and just choose anything you want and we won't be there to survive it. So I'm begging you to show some mercy and force the bylaws. A 20% variance is not minor, it's a joke. And we don't find it very funny. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, any questions?
I don't think so. Nope. Thank you.
I'll just, sir, you mentioned eight or 10 other similar-sized lots that I guess could qualify for consent...
Yep.
Which would be deleterious in your opinion to this neighborhood. I'm just, I'm looking at a location map. I can't see...
Okay, so let's, if you pull up my first, the first from the other file I sent in earlier, which I think is still open.
Is there a filing potentially for it?
Uh, there's... So it was the first one you opened up? Could, yeah, so scroll down, there'll be a table. A little further, there we go.
There you go.
Okay, so this table outlines every property in the large lot neighborhood and it's color-coded so that, so historically, the bylaw of 70 feet was created because it was a number that made it impossible for anybody in the neighborhood to subdivide a lot. The only subdivision that's happened that was legal was a few years ago where they took a 140-foot lot and broke it into two 70s, which had no variations whatsoever. They built a couple nice houses, that's okay. Right? So in that map, it subdivides. So once you go to 54 feet, which is what the applicant is asking, so we're at 69, let's jump to 54. If you take one step to the side, you're at 50. And at this point, there's 18 more, 18 lots that can be subdivided. And there's no way that you, well, that you could say no because you've already said the bylaws don't apply to our neighborhood, so why not build 50 and then, who knows, 45 and then you can divide a bunch more? But at that point, it wouldn't even matter because our neighborhood would no longer be what it is and the people who care will be gone. And this is all so that a couple of people can make money and leave us in the wake where we're there to enjoy our life. It's a nice neighborhood.
Okay, I think we got the question answered.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Not for me.
All right, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the room or is everyone else online?
So there are some online, so I'll connect the next person.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee of Adjustment. My name is Louise San... Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear. I just want to get your address.
35 Yorkley Avenue.
Thank you.
I live next to 39 Yorkley. Mr., I just want to say, Mr. Palumbo...
Sorry, what's your address?
35 Yorkley.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Mr. Palumbo noted at the beginning of his presentation that the house that wasn't, or the address that wasn't opposed to the severance was 45 Yorkley. That is not next door to 39. That is a couple of houses down, but regardless. My husband lives and I live next door. We are strongly objecting the proposed severance of 39 Yorkley. We moved to the neighborhood 13 years ago and will be directly affected by the proposed You know, as mentioned before, one of the proposed homes is grossly undersized by 16, it's proposed at 16.7 meters versus the allowed 21 meters. The second point is exterior stairs will lead to their required setbacks. In addition, the Part Two house approach approximately two meters, the front yard setback. In combination, the variances result in major violation of the bylaw. They actually make a mockery of it. The proposal will change the neighborhood's character and, you know, the bylaw in place to disallow such variances is not even, it's not even, you know, taken into consideration here. Also, in 1974, the borough of Etobicoke created a preservative bylaw, 3148, to disallow such variances. When the successor bylaw, 5692013, took effect, the minimum lot dimensions remained and were left unchanged. Several new owners that move into the neighborhood or even existing owners have attempted to sever their lots the same way they want 39 Yorkley wants to propose. They've pushed through and they failed. One most recent example is the owner of 8 Yorkley. And as Mr. Kennedy has noted, it is now a rooming house because that bylaw wasn't adhered to and it was, and the Committee of Adjustments allowed that to happen. This is not a minor variance, it is a major variance. This goes against the true character of this unique neighborhood, which is again defined by the large sizes with very mature tall trees. There's eight trees or so on at 39 Yorkley and I highly doubt that those trees will be kept on the property just because of where they're located in order to get machines, machines in there to build these homes, virtually impossible to protect these trees. I mean, though Forestry rejected the proposal, you know, now 39 Yorkley and the agent has somehow convinced Forestry that they're not going to be damaged. The proposal making smaller undersized lots change the visual aesthetics of the neighborhood, compromise the value of our homes. The plan proposed demolishing the current house at 39 Yorkley, a beautiful Tudor home with stonework and unique character, which is appealing to the residents. The thought of destroying this home is wasteful and offensive. This should, this home should be protected from being torn down. And finally, collectively, the variances result in major violation of the bylaw and they actually make a mockery of it. 39 Yorkley, the proposal will change the character of this neighborhood as mentioned and will also compromise my family's lifestyle significantly. In allowing this proposal, the future demolition and building on lots do not meet the bylaw requirements and radically modify the fundamentals of properties and change the neighborhood, this neighborhood, the value and set a precedent, all for what? For profit. These homes are multi-million dollar homes that are going to be built. They're not going to address the shortage of housing. It is strictly a proposal to make money. The cost of the residents of this community, of this beautiful street and neighborhood. So I ask you to please, to please reject this proposal. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. No? Our next deputant, Antonio?
Good afternoon, committee members.
Good afternoon. Could I just, are you Antonio Gallipi?
Gallipi? Yes.
Okay, can we just get your address, please?
My name is Antonio Gallipi. I live at 44... I live at 44 Yorkley Avenue, which is one house west and across the street.
Okay, thank you.
My family and I vehemently object to this proposal. We moved in, my wife and I moved in 22 years ago into an older home. And we were faced about eight years ago with the decision of having to build. We do live on one of the larger lots on the street and in the neighborhood. And we were faced with the same situation in that our home was old and needed to be addressed. And all the planning and thought process that went into building our home was, a key decision was that there was the preservative bylaw, that if we were going to make that kind of investment in time, money, and in our family, that it would be protected, because it was already in place. There was no guesswork for us. So we've been in our new constructed home, respecting the neighborhood, respecting the zoning. We had no issues, full support. We went ahead and we built, and we've been living in our home since. And now it's been 22 years. I'm disappointed and upset at the proposal, because the home that's being proposed to be demolished is exactly the type of home and the type of lot that the bylaw and the zoning is there to protect. The owners have been there longer than I have, so many, many years. So it is a head-scratcher at this stage of the game why to knock down a beautiful heritage stone home, to put two homes that severely, severely go against the bylaw and don't come anywhere close to meeting the thresholds and the intent of why they're there. So the look and feel of the neighborhood, the greenery, the country setting, all of that went in place into making the decision to live here in the first place. And then several years later, about 12, 13 years later, to construct a brand-new home and raise a family here. So as Mr. Joe Kennedy said earlier, the look and feel not only will change with this construction, but it opens the doors wide open for further development that goes against the grain of what the neighborhood in spirit is. It's not a one-foot variance, it's not a height restriction by a couple of, it's, it's major, we're talking 20%. And to Mr. Columbo's comments that it's only the frontage that gets affected and everything else is okay. I would argue, I'm a real estate agent, professional realtor for 20 years. It's the frontage that is probably the most important variance that they are going against in a major, major way. So, again, we vehemently oppose. We want to keep the look and feel of the neighborhood. It changes things, not for the better. And I understand that this is an economic play for the, for the owners of 39 Yorkley. But I would argue that ultimately, for all the neighboring properties, it actually will bring down the value of the larger lots. And again, that commitment that my family and I made to build on our lot, in part, in a large part, that decision was made knowing that we were building in a stable environment, stable neighborhood, that it would be protected and keep the longevity and the original look and feel of what attracted us here in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Antonio? Okay, our next speaker?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Are you Ms. Smith?
I am, yes. My name is Sabina Smith. I live at 4 Yorkley Avenue.
Okay.
Across from, across from Joe Kennedy and right beside that rooming house.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead, tell us.
We won't talk about, we won't, we won't talk about that today. I want to speak against the new development proposed at 39 Yorkley Avenue. But my family has lived just down the street for over 50 years. We know the history of the area very well. By the early '70s, our neighborhood had become truly exceptional with large lots and tall trees that you, as you could see from the pictures that Joe showed you. Site-specific bylaw 3148 was enacted establishing minimum lot dimensions to preserve the character of this neighborhood. As a result, the area thrived. New families moved in and new homes kept replacing the old ones. However, as the neighborhood became more diverse, the charact, character was still kept. A primary factor often considered by people motivated to purchase in a particular neighborhood is the degree of spaciousness, sunlight, and privacy that was dictated by zoning bylaws existing when the neighborhood was developed. They paid a higher purchase price and higher annual taxes for the enjoyment of these qualities and are entitled to the protection from a reduction in zoning standards. Some consider zoning bylaws a community contract enshrining the rhythm and character of the neighborhood. It has been argued that residents should be able to rely upon a municipality zoning policies and consider it a breach of trust when they are diminished. The intent and purpose of a zoning bylaw is to prescribe the front, rear, and side yard setbacks, building size, height, and use. It speaks to the matters such as spacing, privacy, density, light, and air, and gives the neighborhood its built form and character. A proposed new development that would split 39 Yorkley into two lots is not compatible with existing homes in the neighborhood with respect to size and setbacks, insensitive to issues such as privacy, scale, and spacing, and detrimental to the streetscape or the character of our neighborhood. And so it should not pass this test. All past attempts to sever lots, to undersized ones in the area, have failed, except for number 8 Yorkley, which took three years of back and forth between our neighborhood committees, T-Lab, and the Committee of Adjustment. Even after T-Lab rejected the severance proposal, the Committee of Adjustment came into the picture again, which we still don't understand why, and approved the split only after the sublot plans were reconfigured so that only one lot was undersized by 3 feet as per minimum frontage, and the other was compliant. The 39 Yorkley split mean, sorry, would mean, one lot would be 15 feet smaller than the bylaw allows. This is far from a minor variance and would not only encroach on the neighbors at 35 Yorkley, but also completely not fit in with the look and feel of the rest of the neighborhood. There are many reasons why this severance should not go forward. I ask the Committee of Adjustment to really look thoroughly at this request. Our neighborhood is a special one, and its integrity should be preserved. Bylaws are there for a reason, and they must be upheld for this reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more speaker?
I object to this severance.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, we just, we just got you unmuted, so if you could restate your name and address first, please?
17 Mount Barton Road.
And you are? Just get your name, please. What is your name?
Anthony Vlasopulos.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The Yorkley area, as you heard, has a unique character of large lots, landscaped gardens, and tall trees. It has been so for over 50 years, since, thanks to preservative bylaw 3148 of 1974, which established the minimum lot dimensions. These dimensions were carried over to the current bylaw, 569/13. Several developers and the occasional owner tried over the years to sever their properties to undersized lots. They all failed. Contrary to what the applicant implies about the presence of a few small lots, they were all created before 1974, and they were grandfathered. Most recently, the developer-owner of 8 Yorkley tried to sever his property to two undersized lots, and he too failed. And as you heard, his application succeeded only after redrawing boundaries to make one of the proposed sublots by law compliant. This application is to create two undersized lots side by side. Such a case has never been approved for Yorkley. To make matters worse, one of the sublots has grossly undersized frontage, 16.7 meters versus 21 minimum. Is that a minor variance to be considered within the mandate of your committee? To add insult to injury, this property is located right at the heart of the Yorkley neighborhood. If this severance is approved, the zoning of Yorkley becomes dead letter. Everyone will feel entitled to and assured of similar treatment. The death of our neighborhood will be a matter of time. My family, dear members, moved here 37 years ago to enjoy the ambience. Our daughter's family plans to succeed us. But now our plans are at risk. If you consent, we cannot appeal. The writing will be on the wall on what's going to follow. It will force us to start looking for another place to live with similar character. But they are scarce. Is your intent to force such a big change as to tacitly kill a zoning bylaw and chase families away? Please refuse this severance and reassure the public that only minor variances relative to zoning get a chance by your committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I'm assuming not. Okay. Do we have any other speakers, Thomas?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So Andrew, I'm going to get you to come back.
All right, Mr. Chairman, there's a number of items, a number of comments that I've heard. First of all, I want to say, I want to thank all of the deputants for the comments that they've raised. I mean, believe, I sympathize with these situations because it's not always easy to understand or grasp the idea of change in a neighborhood. It's supposed to be gradual and sensitive, and that is one of the reasons I'm standing up here today before this committee, because I truly believe it's a proposal that I can stand behind when you look at the actual proposal in its entirety. And I'll touch upon, try and go through all the comments that were raised, because I'll start with one by the existing home having to be demolished. I'll remind the committee, there was an original application, actually, to draw the dividing line, to actually preserve the existing home on site. But city planning staff actually, they opposed that because they didn't like it that it wasn't an even lot split. And hence, again, my, my client went back to the drawing board. That's why you see the severance before you today. That's more of an even split of the lot. So that was the original intent. But again, my client was really just trying to make as many people happy at that point, in terms of the planning department. Then proceeding forward, I think it's important to understand that each application is evaluated on its own merit. I mean, the approval of 8 Yorkley is down the street, it's a corner lot. This is a mid-block lot. And I mean, when I look at the lot fabric in this neighborhood, it's a matter of if what's happening, what's being proposed for 39 Yorkley, other lots don't share the same characteristics. This happens to lend itself to be one of the wider lots that can allow for, again, the variances before this committee. When you look at, like I've said this several times, especially before this committee, you always have to look at things in terms of the cause-and-effect relationship that the variances have with one another. So once you, I understand the numeric, the numerical deviation for the frontage is quite large in terms of when you look at it, what the standard is. But when you look at what results on the ground and what would, what would result in the neighborhood, what should factor in is whether or not is the result is an overdevelopment or something that's inappropriate. I mean, I hear comments about encroachment towards neighbors. But to be clear, there are no setback variances, still to the sides, that is. And the one neighbor that did object at 35 Yorkley, as I think I mentioned in my original outset, the proposed front yard setback on the subject site at 39 Yorkley is actually greater than what already exists at 35. Again, the effort to maintain that open look, and I'll clarify one thing off the bat as well, in terms of trees. There are two trees proposed for removal. One of them's actually dead, and it's the tree that the notice signs were fastened to, for the public notice signs. And there's a poor-conditioned cherry, fruit tree in the back, in the rear yard. And then the urban forestry deferral matter I mentioned right from the outset as well. That has to do with the driveway being within two tree protection zones. Again, because of the rigid policies, urban forestry has no choice but to issue the refusal notice that they did. One thing, and it's not necessarily related to the variances, but it was raised today, so I'll address it. And not that it actually matters towards the variances, but towards the comments that were made. My client has lived in this house for 40-plus years, and his intent is to actually, obviously, if the severance were approved, is to have a son-in-law who's here today live in the house that's built so that the family can actually stay together on the street. That is the actual intention. It's not to make some sort of massive profit, is my understanding. It's a matter of keeping this family together. And like I said, I truly do sympathize. These are not easy situations. But it's one of those things where the only reason I'm up here today is because it's my true opinion that when you're creating these two lots, it's not trying to squeeze too much onto lots that are being created and creating something that's a bit of a monstros, like an atrocity or an abomination. It's done in such a way where there aren't variances needed for some of the, like the typical built form matters that are typically before a committee when a severance is occurring. So yes, again, fully understand that. And the last thing I will say, to close this off, is that I don't think my client would have gone through with this if there wasn't already an existing presence of substandard frontages, of which there are, especially in his section of Yorkley. There, it already exists. It's not, if this were the first one, it would be immensely more difficult, and it would be a lot more harder to convey the understanding. Because at that point, the large lot feel would be completely lost. But it's something that, it already exists in this neighborhood. And doing so on this property is, it still respects and maintains the, in my opinion. This is just my opinion. It maintains the character of this neighborhood overall. Because again, you look at the variances that are before you, in my opinion, again, they meet the four tests, they are appropriate, and they would allow two new dwellings to exist in a compatible and in a manner which that respects this neighborhood, rather than, than the opposite. Because if there were other variances in play, I would think that that would compromise the application. I don't even know if I'd be able to stand up here today.
You've got 20 seconds.
I think I'm good.
Okay. Thanks. Don't go away. Any questions for the applicant? No? Any last questions for any of the deputants? No? Okay.
Thank you very much for your time. A long wait today, sorry.
No worries. We're still a long way from the hockey game. Okay, let's take it into committee then. Any discussion? I just, I was trying to find, just a question for staff. There's no location map on this item.
No, there's one in the previous material.
Previous? Okay, because I'm trying to, was trying... Because it's helpful to look at that, because you've got the lot sizes on there. Yeah, it doesn't cover what I was trying to, no, yeah. And that 8 Yorkley, that's, has it? The original house, has it been demolished? Or is that the original one that people are renting now? Anyway. It's the original, so they haven't, they haven't gone forward with the severance? Okay. No, just, that was just for my own curiosity. I don't think this guy's going to build a rooming house if he gets this. But anyway, that's... Okay. All right. So any other comments? If not, is anyone ready for our motion if we don't have any, if no one's ready for any discussion? If we're in committee, I'll just toss something out. Yeah. Stir the creative juices. There's obviously a lot of passion from people that live on this street about the integrity of that 1970s bylaw to protect the character of this neighborhood. And I'm sure, I'm just looking at this location map, and I'm sure that concern was prompted by some of the development that must have predated that bylaw. Maybe Mr. Kennedy or Mrs. Kennedy, I don't know if you've lived in this area for a long time. Okay, can we step out of committee? Because I'd like to ask Mr. Kennedy.
There shouldn't be all the back.
There shouldn't be the back. Okay, okay, I don't need, I don't need to know.
No, no.
I don't want to know.
No, sir.
No.
Right now.
Saw your map.
We can't just keep going back and...
So it, it looks like pre-'70s, there were a number of severances, consents granted. I'm looking at 36, 30... I need to strike my glasses. 36, 40, 48, 56, right across the street.
I need to strengthen my glasses, thirty-six, forty, forty-eight, fifty-six, right across the street. Narrow lots. Probably about the size of what's proposed today. Then the bylaw comes in and says, nope, twenty-one meters, that's it. A lot of passion about preserving that. One gentleman said he moved into the area because he knew there was a twenty-one minimum meter minimum frontage. And that gave him the assurance that he could live in an area where that was not going to be compromised. So, now we look what's proposed and, uh, Mister Colombo made great points about usually with a consent, you need a lot of variances. In this case, it's only frontage. But frontage on this particular street, and many of us know it because we've heard applications before, is a very serious concern for the neighbors. So, trying to look at this objectively. Minor variances for frontage, two are required. I look at part two, over nineteen meters, twenty-one required. I could probably can, be convinced and satisfied that that was a minor variance, it's within ten percent. In my own mind, that's kind of borderline, but I would say, yeah, I would probably be supportive of that. However, part one is four point three meters short, it's about twenty percent. In my mind, that's where the worm turns on this. I don't see this as a minor variance and it's solely and only because I don't see the frontage of part one being a minor variance related to the existing bylaw that requires twenty-one. So when it comes to motion time, I will either second, make, or vote on a motion to refuse.
Well summarized, Mister Taylor. Anyone else?
Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to add that, not that we're supposed to be basing this on precedent, but the precedent has been set by eight Yorkley. And eight Yorkley go up the nineteen point two-two meters, which is sixty-three feet or a ten percent reduction. So-
That's like part one, uh, part two here.
Yeah, which is part two here, so-
That's what I was going to say, part two is looking for nineteen point one-three, which is essentially sixty-three feet. Again, ten percent reduction is fine. My challenge again is, like Dawn, is on part one, is now that the needle has to move, take it down to sixteen, seven, seven, which is fifty-five feet. So in looking at the overall context of the area, I can't support it and I would move a motion for refusal.
Okay, so we have a motion for refusal on the table, do we have a second or?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mister Taylor, all in favor? Okay, the application is refused. Thank you to everyone for a long one. Oh, uh, it's unanimous. Sorry. Oh, um, that- Who's going, yeah?
So I'll, I'll move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I was going to say, I need one more motion. Okay, we're adjourned. Five, thank you.